My name is Mary Ann Barnes. I'm a chair of the Cleveland Heights University Heights Chapter of the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland. And we are happy to welcome you tonight to this candidate forum for Cleveland Heights City Council, which is presented by the Heights Chapter of the League of Women Voters along with Future Heights. We want to thank Future Heights for their collaboration on this forum, as well as for the 2019 Voter Guide, which has been published as an insert in the October Heights Observer and is also available on the literature table. We also want to thank the City of Cleveland Heights for the use of the community center for this forum. This is always a great venue for this event. We also thank our volunteers. We have a number of volunteers working on this forum, next week's forum, and also the voter guide. There are too many for me to name, but I really wanted to express thanks to them, although I think we need a special shout out to Blanche Valenti, who spearheaded that. And last but not least, we want to thank our candidates for participating in tonight's forum. I wanted to point out a few useful items that we have on the literature table outside of the forum room. We have voter registration cards. If you haven't yet, vote registered to vote. I think almost everybody here has registered to vote, but some people may not realize that they need to re-register if they've changed their address. So we can take care of that this evening. The deadline is October 7th, so we have a few days to take care of that. We also encourage people to verify their registration online at the Board of Education, Board of Elections, Kiowa County Board of Elections website, because the state of Ohio has recently cleaned up the rolls, and we think that we're fearful that some people may have been cleaned up and don't eat, that shouldn't have been. So we're encouraging all voters to go onto the Board of Elections website and verify their voter registration. We also have out there vote by mail application forms. You no longer have to have a reason for voting absentee, like you're out of town or anything like that. Anybody can vote by mail. It's actually a very convenient way to do it. I do it most every time. And if you're a little bit nervous about what's happening to your ballot because you don't see it in the mail, you can sign up for a... On the Board of Elections site, there is a Track My Ballot Voter Notify, which is a very convenient service. It tells you when they received your application, when they've sent out the ballot, when they've received your ballot. So I encourage you to sign up for that. And then the other thing that you will find out there, I mentioned the voter guide is also out there. There is also a little voting 1-2-3 guide put out by the League of Women Voters of Ohio. And on this is also a schedule for early voting hours. So if you want to vote early before Election Day, you can find the schedule on this little card. Now, let's see. We also have these little cards that direct you to votefor11.org. This is the League of Women Voters' online voter guide. And the online voter guide contains everything that's in here, but even a little bit more. Candidates have a few more questions that are included in the online version, but the Vote411 site is also just a basically good go-to site for all kinds of election information, so we highly encourage you to use that. Now, we will have a second forum next week to cover the ballot issue 26. As most of you probably realize, this is the proposal to change the Cleveland Heights Charter to establish an elected mayor to replace a city council and a city manager form of government. And that will be next Thursday, October 10th at 7:00 PM. That forum will take place at the Cleveland Heights High School in their cafeteria. Tonight's forum is being videotaped, and this will be posted on our League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland's YouTube channel. If you have difficulty finding that through YouTube, if you go to our website, which is also on the little card that I think just fell on the floor, you can click on the YouTube icon on our website and go directly to the channel. It should be at that point fairly easy to find the videotaping of this evening's forum. Now, these forums, the videotaping of forums, and also creating a printed guide, these incur costs. So if you like these services and you want to see them continue, we want to encourage you to make a donation. So we do have envelopes out there that you can use and a big orange box that you can put your donation in, or you can take this home and then mail it in. The envelopes say it's for the Greater Cleveland Centennial Celebration, but this would be fine for using it for Cleveland Heights voter service, voter services, and forums, and voter guides. You just cross out Centennial Celebration and write in Cleveland Heights University Heights Chapter, or just Heights Chapter, and the treasurer will make sure it goes to the right spot. And as long as you earmark both the check and/or the envelope, it'll get to us. I want to make sure that, repeat the fact that the League of Women Voters has a non-partisan policy. We do take positions on issues, but we do not endorse candidates, and we do not support or endorse political parties. And last but not least, remember to vote, or on or before Election Day, November 5th this year. And so now I'm going to turn this over to our moderator. I'm going to clean up my stuff here, and then turn it over to our moderator for the evening, Wendy Dury.
Since the election for school board and for University Heights Council are uncontested, they only have the needed number of candidates for the positions that are open. We are not holding a forum for them this year. We will only be hearing from the candidates for the Cleveland Heights City Council. Before we begin, a few rules. We ask candidates and their supporters to refrain from partisan activity inside this room. Campaign materials may be placed on the literature table outside in the lobby. This is a forum to hear and question the candidates. It is not planned as a debate between opposing candidates. Each candidate must appear in person and at the time slotted for his or her race. No stand-ins are permitted. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and one minute for a closing statement after a question and answer session. Time limits are strictly enforced. Our timer will give candidates warnings as their time is ending. In order to keep things moving along, we also ask the candidates to use one of the table mics and stay at their place at the table. Only breakroom questions will be accepted. Succinct questions should be addressed to one candidate. Other candidates will have the opportunity to answer if appropriate. If you want to receive a card and write your question on, please raise your hand. Many of you have already turned in questions. Our question screeners will review all of the submitted questions in order to avoid duplication, to provide a diversity of questions, and to ensure readability and appropriateness of the questions. And finally, we ask the cooperation of the audience in avoiding expressions of support or opposition to any candidate during the presentation time or answers to the questions. It only takes time away from the candidates. To quote Thomas Jefferson, "Information is the currency of democracy." May you all be made welcome by your presence here tonight. Our first group of candidates is running for Cleveland Heights City Council for a full four-year term. Five candidates are running for three open seats. Candidates are to be elected to four-year terms on a salary of $9,200 per year. Our candidates have already drawn numbers to determine the order in which they will be speaking. Our first opening statement will be from Anthony Maddox Jr.
Good evening. I wanted to spend a couple of moments just introducing myself. Again, my name is Anthony Maddox Jr. I am a lifelong Cleveland Heights resident. I currently live on Scarborough. However, my wife and I just purchased a house there. I spent my life on Noble Road. I graduated from Cleveland Heights High School in the Class 2000 as a four-year, four-term class president. My very first job in the City of Cleveland Heights was at 12 years old in the tour program at City Hall. I currently serve, and have served since 2014 on the city's planning commission, and I pastor a church in East Cleveland called the Empowerment Church where I've served for 15 years. In addition, I spent 10 years working for key bank and financial sector, specifically loan services, in the areas of foreclosure, repo, mortgages, debt, and several other assets that we own as well. I'm currently a full-time pastor there at the church. I'm running for several reasons. Number one, I'm running for transparency. I want to make sure that you have leaders that are clear about what's going on in your community, and when you have questions, they have answers. One of my biggest focuses is also community engagement. I want to make sure that you see us active in the community, in your neighborhoods, on your streets, so that we get an understanding of what's happening in every area of the city, not just the areas that we live in. I'm also running on vision. I believe that we could do more, and I believe together we can make that happen. There are areas of this city that need development in terms of Noble, Taylor, and the Severance Road, so I look forward to having a conversation with you tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maddox. Second, and thirdly, the order is randomly determined for the statements. Khalil Sarin, please.
First of all, thank you, everybody, for being here on a wet Thursday night. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and to introduce myself as well. My name is Khalil Sarin. I'm a Cleveland Heights City Council person. This will be my second term, and I am unfortunate enough to be re-elected. The reason why I'm running for reelection is because over the last four years, I feel like I've accomplished a bit, and I feel like there's a lot of work left to make sure that Cleveland Heights Government fulfills the promise that it makes to its residents every day. In my day job professionally, I work as a policy professional, public policy professional. I write legislation, and generally I work in the areas of economic development, workforce developments, and community development. These sorts of skills and my expertise in those areas are brought to Cleveland Heights City Council, specifically in the realm of community development, focusing on the foreclosure bond legislation that I introduced and helped with the assistance of residents, activist residents in the community, helped to get passed at the city council to hold banks accountable and hold them to their requirements to take care of the houses that they foreclose on. Additionally, the legislation that I introduced helped landlords accountable. When they aren't paying their taxes, it's a very simple proposition that they shouldn't be allowed to rent properties in the city. They have to fulfill their responsibilities as well. That's just a couple of the accomplishments that I've had. I take my role as a legislator very seriously, and I think over the last four years I've proven that I'm thoughtful but bold legislator who fights for what I think is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sarin. Our third candidate is Mary Dunbar.
I had two terms on city council, and I'd like one more, because I believe we are at a turning point for our community, one that can have a very positive outcome. Because I've been on city council for eight years, I can be effective now in steering our course in a positive direction. Thanks to the master plan that our city manager, Spearhead, and the council adopted, we have many pieces in place to reinvigorate Cleveland Heights, and we've made a start. The numerous economic development projects underway in our city can ultimately boost our tax base and ease the tax burden on residents. We have Top of the Hill College Club and Medusa Building Projects. The Meadowbrook Lead Project has now spread to Cedar with new ideas for severance. We have partnered with Future Heights to have a community development corporation, also known as the CBC, which this year is renovating five or six vacant and abandoned homes with the aim of selling them to homeowners at market rates. Next year, the CBC will renovate a dozen vacant and abandoned homes. Almost nothing major happens at the municipal level without first completing a study, because the studies enable funding. We now have plans for Mayfield Road, Noble Road, Taylor Road, Conton Road. As these plans are implemented, they will cut swathes of renovation through our city, and I fully expect renovation to spill over to surrounding streets. Also under development are plans for infill housing. We have 170 vacant lots, especially in the northern part of Cleveland Heights that are owned by the county or city land banks. Rather than these lots from the illiability, we have a great opportunity to add new housing to our stock and attract those who prefer new. These are just a few highlights. I hope you'll vote for me to keep Cleveland Heights moving in a positive direction.
Thank you, Mary. Our fourth candidate is Carol Rowe.
Good evening, everyone. I am Carol Rowe, and I am in the Noble area of Cleveland Heights. I'm here this evening asking for your vote to be re-elected to council. During the four years that I have served on council, I have been part of passing legislation to preserve our housing stock, to put in motion development projects, and have already been mentioned by other candidates, increased programs to attract businesses, to have Cleveland Heights declare a welcoming city, and to support the efforts of our police department, which has led to a 28% decrease in violent crime from 2017 to 2018. I've also been very involved in enhancing our collaboration with the school board and working more collectively together. We recently had our first meeting of the school board, the library board, and the council of University Heights joining with our council. We are, as taxing agencies, are looking at how we can be more efficient and look at being more cooperative in terms of sharing services. So those are some of the projects that I have worked on in the last four years. I want to continue to be on council for another four-year term, to see many of those projects to fruition, but I also want us to deal with our long-term fiscal stability issue, because we need more residents in a city that has 20% of its population living at the poverty level or below. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rowe. And our fifth candidate this evening is Melanie Joy Hart.
Hi. I'm a fourteen-year resident living in Heights. I chose to live there even though I was working in Akron, because I love the community. I love where people live. I love the fact that it's walkable and bikeable. I care deeply about the community, and it's part of my values, because we're all neighbors, and we really have to work together, all areas, in order to solve our issues and keep our beautiful city the way it is. Because I've been attending the council and leading the whole meetings for almost four years, and I'm very familiar with issues, we hit the ground running. I am certified public accountant. I'm certified in financial planning and analysis, which involves the budgeting process, and treasury. I have over thirty-five years' experience in the Fortune 1000 in senior management and finance. I watched cops go through the budget forecasting cycles, and I realized that my specific credentials and skills would be helpful. I'm also a member of GCC Cleveland Heights, and I've been working on housing issues in the Noble area for three years. And our group successfully convinced the council to pass foreclosure bond. We also advocated for forensic inspection for funding the CDC and for having US Bank close the Noble corridor project. So you see, I'm not just talking, I've actually been doing stuff. So housing stock, and I'm trying to make better community for us. Housing stock and economic development are key areas. I feel we have to focus that and that to increase the tax base. Noble, Top of the Hill, Meadowbrook, those are all good. I think those areas are actually fairly vibrant. We should begin to really refocus that, not talk efforts on the others, but focus some efforts on severance. I love the city of its compassion. My husband and I fought for the freedom of Haitian asylum seeker, and as sponsors, he's been living with us. We formed a support group with many Cleveland Heights residents, and that shows the compassion of Cleveland Heights. That's why I love it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hart. Turning now to questions from the audience. I do have quite a few cards up here already, but if you have a question that you would like to submit, just raise your hand, and you'll be given a card to fill out. Or if you already want to fill out, it will be brought up to the front. Thank you very much. We'll start with a warm-up question here. We'll just go down the table here, starting with Mr. Sarin. Are you a registered voter at your current address?
Yes, I'm a registered voter. I have checked multiple times in the last six months.
Yes, I am a registered voter at my address. The fact I got my confirmation in the mail today.
Yes, I am a registered voter.
I am. I'm a registered voter.
Too many questions. All right. We'll go from softball to Top of the Hill. The general question is, what do you think about the Top of the Hill process, and would you do it differently? And then there's a specific question to current council members, if you would like to expand on this. Apparently, residents of Buckingham condominium have written a letter to council and have not heard response stating that they believe the Top of the Hill project violates the stated purpose of the zoning ordinance on the city's website, which says the ordinance is for protection of property values to assure adequate light and air, to limit control and regulate height, size, and area for all properties, and to protect the physical environment and natural resources for all citizens. That is the zoning ordinance for Cleveland Heights. We'll start with Ms. Dunbar at the front of the table. I'll look this way.
I think it's quite remarkable how we seem to have managed to make everybody in this community mad. It started with Fario coming to Cedar Fairmount, and that created parking problems, and then now people are worried about judicial traffic issues and so on in that area because of the Top of the Hill development. Also, there was unplanned development at Taylor Fairmount, where we have GGS and all the rides, no parking, people parking things. So if there's development, they're mad. If there isn't development, they're mad because they're being neglected and so on. So we're trying to balance all this, and I do think a lot of good things are in store regarding the process at Top of the Hill. I'm very much in favor of that project happening. I think it's important for our tax base, and it sets a stage for more to come.
Thank you, Ms. Dunbar. We'll just continue down the table.
So Top of the Hill, let's certainly, all the economic development projects lead us to the top of them, because there's a lot of people who are opposed to particularly the tall building that's right at the top of the hill. While economic development is important, I do think citizens should be heard as well, and you know, some compromises may be perhaps. I know that they've been trying to do compromises, but I don't think they've gotten quite to where all the residents are happy. Again, it may be that some residents may not be happy in the end, I suppose, but I think the people in Buckingham certainly have a beef, because their property is the one that's going to be most affected, because this big building's right next to it. So I understand their issues and hope that they get some resolution. Thank you.
So the people in my neighborhood have suggested we move the Top of the Hill project to the Noble area and have moved the Falcon to the Top of the Hill. I am supportive of this project for exactly the reason I said, one of the reasons I said in my opening statement. We have to have more residents to pay more taxes. We cannot continue long-term at the rate that we're going if we don't figure out a way to decrease the tax burden somewhat. We can't increase taxes. So Top of the Hill is one example of a project, and our law director is right now working on new spots to the Buckingham residence.
Thank you.
As a member of the planning commission, I've had the opportunity to work through this project, and there are several pieces of feedback that I have received. Number one is the parking issue there. A lot of residents in that area feel like this project was literally rammed down their throats with little opportunity to really explain their issues with it. Many people disagree with that. What I do know is that there are issues that need to be addressed, such as parking, such as the size of the building, and the design. Just because we need to do something doesn't mean we should just do anything. So I want to continue to look at this issue and really make sure that we're addressing the current problems.
Answer the question first of all.
I'll say what I think about Top of the Hill is a bit nuanced. The process, hindsight being 2020, yeah, I would have done it a little bit differently. I had a conversation regarding the creation of the parking deck on Coventry and the process that the city went through ahead of that project being started. And they spent six months talking to residents, apparently. They talked to residents, they got input, and they used that input to decide what the project would be. I think probably a little bit more time on the front end could have helped avoid some of the problems that we're dealing with now. Additionally, frankly, I'm disappointed with the project. It's not true economic development. It's residential, you know, real estate development mostly. There was office use in this project that has been removed from the project, which is frankly a very big disappointment for me.
Thank you very much. I received two other questions about Top of the Hill. I don't know if any of you care to address either one of them. This is just a toss-up. If the developers seek more money above the $1.8 million, would you be willing to support more money? And the other question is, can you explain how the project grew taller when so many residents voiced displeasure with the height?
Sure. I can address at least some of that from my perspective as not somebody who's negotiating with these developers, but somebody on council who's receiving reports from staff. For one, in terms of the height of the building, the mass of the building, my understanding is that the density needed to achieve profitability for the developer, without that profitability, the development would not happen. That density required a larger building. That's the very point-blank answer. Without profitability, a developer will not develop a decent one. The other perfect question was...
If they want more money?
Oh, the simple answer back from me is no.
Anyone else care to respond?
Yes. That Top of the Hill discussion sort of resulted in impossible choices. There were some people that actually wanted it to be tall and a big statement. They wanted a big, bold statement when it came up Cedar Hill. And then there were others who didn't want that kind of development at all. They would have liked big condos or something, two stories high. There were completely views about what you could go there, and it was pretty obvious it couldn't keep everybody happy. The plan for that area was developed some time ago and brought back to the fore when we went up for requests or proposals for developers, and the one we chose was carefully vetted to have the financial wherewithal to do the project, and to what they had done in other cities was also inspected by our city staff. So I think we've done the best we can.
I'll just simply answer by saying I wouldn't agree to give the developer any more money.
I'll just simply answer by saying, I wouldn't agree to give the developer any more money. We're looking to just give away money. There's some people on Taylor and Melville that want to use it.
So I don't have anything to add in terms of the process of how the building design changed or anything like that. But I don't sense any appetite at all for any council member to give the developer any more money.
Thank you.
I wouldn't support giving more money unless it were an economic benefit to the city that people, what we have to do, to give them.
Start, going back to some more fundamental city issues. Are there ways that we can improve the infrastructure, especially water and sewer? Would you like to comment on that? And also, what is your position on outsourcing the trash and refuse department? And we'll continue to work in reverse order, starting with Ms. Hart.
So the trash and refuse, the task force is looking at it. I don't know that they've come to the conclusion of outsourcing. I think there's many things, and usually what you're trying to do is to spread the fixed cost over a larger portion of people when you're outsourcing. But you can do that as well with regionalization, so you can pair up with other cities. Because one of the issues with privatization is while you might lower your cost, you want to ensure you still have the service. So regionalization can negotiate with the cities to try to get, to try to get the services where you want them and spread the cost over several cities.
What do you have to add? Water, sewer, infrastructure issues.
Yeah, what? They are, there is going to have to be a big sewer project. We already know that. And we're waiting for the results of the study.
Ms. Rowe?
Ms. Hart is right. We really don't know the magnitude yet of the assessment of the sewer issue. That might be another opportunity to look at some connection with other cities and look at whether or not there might be collaboration. As we know, that there are many other aging suburbs that are having some of the same issues. I think in terms of the refuse and recycling task force, it would be premature to comment before we know what their recommendations are. I do know that efforts to privatize any kind of essential city services would be met with a lot of controversy in Cleveland Heights.
Mr. Max?
I too, I'm looking really long through the numbers in terms of the sewer. I know it's a major issue, a major amount of money that we're concerned about, and it's coming out of our pockets. I really would like more information on that before I can give you something definitive. However, I can tell you that I am not for trash privatization. Regionalism, like Melody, I'm very interested in. I think there's some other solutions we need to explore. If you want my personal opinion, I'm kind of fearful about seeing trash cans blowing down the street. I'm dodging the trees of our office Scarborough as it is. But I'm very curious to see what the task force comes up with.
Mr. Sarin?
Council did an ingenious thing by creating this refuse and recycling task force. We were successful at taking a group of residents and passing this deliberation responsibility on to them. This is something that councils do periodically for both good and bad reasons. One of the good reasons is that we can get some input from some people who are dedicated to studying this idea in a very concentrated way, in a way that maybe council doesn't have the opportunity to do. So I'm also looking forward to hearing what they have to say. This is going to be a tough decision for us to make. I can talk about some of my baseline biases immediately. And I generally have a bias against privatization because you insert the profit moment, and that has a tendency to increase your cost to them while reducing their cost and our service. So this is something that I think that we should take a very close look at and be very skeptical of the promises that private company might make to us.
Thank you. And Ms. Dunbar?
Regarding teeming with labor in communities on this, there are some communities surrounding us that have already outsourced their garbage collection. And you see the cans for that, Kimball is using them in some communities. And I believe Schicker and University Heights still do their own garbage collection, but it's not an opportunity that we can do with everyone. The regarding, well, and the task force that's working on recycling has some really expert people on it. So I'm looking forward to what they have to say, and then we'll have to decide what we're going to do. Regarding the sewers, there's a study underway that is due to be completed by November about what the condition of the sewers is and what needs to be done to fix them. I think our area has been paying for sewers in newer parts of the country or developing parts of the country for years and years. I think they owe us. And I hope we can get some, get the infrastructure money that's coming to communities to toward our solution.
As a small aside, I moderated a forum in Shugman Falls, and sewers were also a question there. Sewers and water lines, it's a problem throughout the region. Serious problem. All right, this question will begin with Ms. Rowe, to the pattern going here. I have two different development questions. You can answer either or. What are the plans for Noble? And what are the plans for Severance? And there's a sub-question on the Severance one. Do you plan on asking the Severance residents what they want?
So Noble, we were success, Future Heights was successful in obtaining funds to do an extensive study called the Noble of the Noble Road quarter. We have just received the final recommendations of that study. And like a lot of other projects, it will require a substantial amount of money to make significant changes. But there are some things from an early action standpoint that we will proceed with. And we will, we will do that in collaboration with our planning and development committee. We're going to be looking at that at a committee meeting sometime in the next couple of months. And in terms of severance, we have several people who, several groups who did respond to our requests for proposals, and we are in the process of looking at those right now.
Mr. Max?
I'll start with Noble first, just because I've got a heart for it. We've been waiting a long time for some development there. I want some opportunities for small businesses and community development in that area. I want to see some grants for investments. I want to see landlords held accountable. There are residents who feel like they're cracking down harder than landlords who they haven't seen in months. There needs to be some equity there. When we walk down the streets, I want to be able to make it look like the rest of the city. It's very clear when the city shifts, if you drive down Taylor or Noble and something needs to shift with that. A lot of things that need to happen with severance, we need to start dealing with the people who actually own those properties and cracking down on them. But there's some things on Noble we can do right now.
Thank you. Mr. Sarin?
Thank you. I think the first step when it, when it comes to Noble is figuring out what people in the neighborhood want. I think it, it requires community organization. And I, you know, there's some community organizers here tonight from the Noble neighborhood right now. And I applaud their efforts. More needs to be done in terms of reaching out to residents and making sure that they feel like they are included in this community and getting here and there. So that's the first step, is that community organizing piece. The second step is investment. The second step is not just investing money, all the assets that are there too, but investing effort on a staff level, effort from the city level, related to, as was mentioned earlier, holding, plant owners accountable. I received a call just the other day related to an apartment that needs some, I'd say, visitation from the city. These are, these are things that we need to be aggressive about. And when it comes to severance, just before my time runs out, we need to be aggressive with that owner as well. Because we need to get site control so that we can do whatever we need to do in that area.
Thank you. Ms. Dunbar?
I read all eighty-five pages of the Noble Road study. And I was rather kind of disappointed that it wasn't a definitive study. It actually called for three more studies. And they were all important. One was the transportation study to make sure that what was being proposed was going to work. There was a study called for for economic analysis to encourage people to invest in that area and make sure that there really is a market there that would support the kinds of things that we all want to have. Basically, there's been some recent study by one group that said that there's amenities the neighborhoods have that make them attractive. It's things like grocery stores, restaurants, bars, and coffee shops, public and commercial spaces, gyms and fitness centers, movie theaters, bowling alleys, entertainment venues, parks and recreation, community centers and libraries. We have a lot of that all over this community, more in some places than others. My goal would be to make sure that every part of our community has that kind of amenity that draws the community together.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rowe?
I really, I like the project of Noble's sewer project. I think it's a good step. I think the city's going to take some areas that they can do right away, some will take longer. We'll probably have to get people, get the business development people on board to start to try to recruit businesses into that area after some additional street skate and investments done. I also think another part of Noble that has to be addressed is the housing, which includes the landlords. And I think having our housing violations being criminal is not right because it means a citizen who, resident, is given a criminal charge if they have one. And the problem with the landlords is that they end up, they end up just moving into another LLC because they have to be delivered a, to be served. So when they find these, find when they show up, when they get to another LLC, now they have to start the process over. So a civil option would be, I think, a good step.
Thank you very much. Next question is on sustainability and climate change. Other cities, notably South Oakland and Shaker Heights, have departments of sustainability or sustainability directors. Would you support the establishment of a sustainability office to make Cleveland Heights a leader in fighting the causes of climate change? And alternatively, what are your views on climate change? I'm sorry, Mr. Sarin?
I would love to have someone at the city level focused on that. I can tell you that we have tons of experts across this community. I've heard from many of them as I've knocked on doors, and I would like to see them involved in this process as well. We can't just ignore it. It's not going away. We need to address it and do what we can. I would like us to step out and be leaders in this area and become a voice. Many times, cities pick up projects and pick up a focus because all of a sudden it becomes popular. But I really would like us to start leading in some of these areas, and climate change is one of those.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sarin?
Well, I'm definitely dedicated to doing what we can to fight the harmful effects of human-created climate change. I think that, well, for one, in terms of creating a department of sustainability, I authored the legislation at the county level to create the county's Department of Sustainability. This is something that I'm definitely dedicated to, and I believe that Cleveland Heights, we do a lot, but we could do a lot more. Right now, I've been struggling to have heard the residential pace program that would allow residents to take environmentally conscious, energy-efficient improvements to their home and finance them by the savings that they would create. This is something that requires city action to enable. And so far, over the last little while, the city has been resistant to this. So creating a Department of Sustainability while water roll, if that department is hamstrung by what goes on in the city, then it would be less effective than you would like.
Thank you. Ms. Dunbar?
We already have a lot of pilots underway in the sustainability area, which are often generally led by individuals. And I would hope that ultimately we could turn it into a cohesive program for our city for sustainability. It includes the Friends of Lower Lake, who are removing invasive species and putting in native plants. Don't Watershed Partnership is a board I serve on, and there's a number of initiatives that they have to enhance our environment. There's polluter, there's pollinator projects, all in the Noble neighborhood and also in Onradford, for example, that encourage pollinators who are getting decimated by things. There's people that are interested in trees and planting trees, and we're moving forward with that. And then if people could be encouraged to compost garbage, they would reduce garbage dramatically. There's a lot that we can do, and I would like to see us tackle it. And I agree, we should be leaders in this area.
We're a city that is progressive, and we've consistently done things that have been out front. And I think this is one of the areas where we should be leader and be out front and pulling things together and putting a program and policy in place so that we can move forward. And it's great to also, with all the organizations she's talking about, if we could have those under, to have input to it, I think it would help the program even be better.
Ms. Rowe?
So this is one of the projects that I have worked very closely with Noble neighbors on in terms of community gardens and pocket gardens in our area, which not only provide more beauty to us as a community, but they also go a long ways in terms of helping us with what we're trying, re-getting our insects back. We've really got to do something about the butterflies. So I've even, I've committed to having native plants in my yard in the spring. So I think as a city, if we could bring some people together, much like the model of the task force, and look at a number of recommendations, then we need to replace all the trees we just lost with the microburst.
Thank you. Two questions here on financial incentives, financial assistance. Besides loans, what resources are available to help owners maintain our century homes, our older homes? And alternatively, how does the city use tax incentives and abatement to attract businesses?
All right, so the first question, we have created a citywide CRA. What that means is that we are providing tax abatements on the improvements that are made to our homes. This is something that I pushed, along with Councilman Jason Stein, pushed very, very strongly for a tiered approach so that the assistance is provided where the assistance is needed most and less assistance is provided in those areas of our city where the assistance is needed less. Additionally, access to grants and technical assistance, we provide through contracts with Cleveland Restoration Society and those sorts of organizations. When it comes to incentives for businesses, attracting businesses, one of the things that I'm excited about is a job creation tax benefit that relies on requirements for job creation and tax pay, you know, tax rules that businesses create for incentives.
Thank you. Ms. Dunbar?
We have a number of programs in place, as Cleo has noted. I, I'm not sure that, I think we should reexamine the incentive programs after they've been in effect for a year. I have some develop, some architects coming to me that wanted to do demonstration projects. One of them wanted to build a $700,000, $800,000 home for him. That would be a demonstration. And then the trouble with that is the taxes on that would be like $30,000 at least. So we need to think about, carefully about what we're doing. There are a lot of programs that the city has to provide loans to people, down payment assistance through the Home Repair Resource Center, through the city, by the options of, it's just impossible to go through them right now, but they're there. So go for it.
The CRA came in this last year, and it's really a good opportunity for people like if you're breaking, wait, this house is needing a lot of work. So if you're going to have to make improvements, put in bedrooms, all that kind of stuff, this is an opportunity to get a tax payment on that. You can also combine it with Cleveland Restoration, where you can get low interest loan as well. So there are programs like that, and I think they're very good. And I think will help also for people who are trying to age in place because you can add on, put, you know, first floor bathroom and bedrooms, of course, that you can, you can remain in for long. So these things are, I think, good aspects. Also help...
So these things are, I think, a good aspect, also help business. And I am for tax incentives for business if it gets them in here. I do think it needs to use jobs as well. They should get the benefit for that. But I think that, I think that some of these tools that we have do help.
Thank you.
So I support all of the things that people have already mentioned in this discussion. I think another tool that we need to make use of though is helping hook up people who are just starting a business with mentors and develop some mentorship programs that help people understand what are the resources to help small businesses, such as the Small Business Development Center, the Heights Hill Crest Chamber of Commerce, and some of the Future Heights programs that actually work with small business owners to help them learn the basics and hook them up with people that have been successful.
Thank you.
In terms of housing, there's one focus that I'm hearing over and over across the city and that's for seniors who are aging in place. We need to pursue some type of grants or finances that will allow them to keep their homes up to code, to keep their homes safe and allow them to safely age in place and that is a major issue in terms of businesses. I believe we have quite a bit of small businesses in our city. The feedback I'm getting is many of them want to expand, but the space is just simply too expensive. We need some type of financial literacy assistance. So I think some coaching, some mentorship, and some avenues that we create where small businesses can expand. I would like to see our smaller businesses here expanding at jobs in this community and move into larger spaces, but let's use what we have in our hands right now.
Thank you very much. All right, one final question, having to do with the elected mayor issue. We do have some more detailed questions, which will be held for the forum next week, which will be totally about the elected mayor's city manager issue. What is your position about the initiative to have residents elect the mayor? And alternatively, what are ways that you can hold the city manager accountable, starting with Ms. Dunbar?
So I am adamantly opposed to having an elected mayor of this city. You know, there's been some complaints about council members taking a position on this. We're elected to make the best decision we can in behalf of the residents of Cleveland Heights and making choices for the greater good is a council member's responsibility. A lot of the information, there's a lot of misinformation out there about the elected mayor. I personally am very disappointed that voters do not have the choice between what our Charter Review Commission proposed and the elected mayor proposal. It's just wrong because people are not being given the real choice. We could have had a robust and informed discussion. If you don't understand what you're rejecting, you shouldn't vote. We have a city manager who's a star of her profession or organization. We've worked with her for several years and some great things are happening. Research shows that the city manager council form of government has far fewer cases of corruption than the elected mayor council form of government. We're beginning to move in the right direction. Let's not disrupt that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rose.
I've lived in a lot of different cities as I've relocated in corporate America and I've seen both types of government and they can work or not work. But one of the things I have noticed in general is that in general, the cities that are economically homogeneous tend to do okay, in that growing tax basis, tend to do okay with the city manager because you have a caretaker government. And cities that are like ours, that are diverse and have issues, need a little more vision. So I think, I am myself for the elected mayor, but most of all, I trust our citizens to know how they want to vote, what kind of a government they want. I mean, I don't think this is something that should be up to me or to any of us. It's up to everyone here to make up their mind and vote the government they want.
Thank you.
So I oppose this ballot issue. I think that it really halts and slows down potentially the momentum that we currently have, particularly in the economic development area. I think it gives a message to our senior staff that their jobs may be politicized and that will lead to the departure of many of our experienced staff. I think that the recommendations of the Charter Review Commission strengthen the accountability that we need to build in, in terms of holding the city manager accountable. One way to hold the city manager accountable is to make sure that every single council person participates in evaluating the city manager.
Thank you.
I'll start out by saying I am 100% for an elected mayor. I believe the integrity of your government does not come just from the form of the government, but from the people you elect. I believe we can be trusted to elect the people at this table. We can most certainly be trusted to select our own mayor. I want someone with a vision, someone with strategy and energy. I want to see someone who's walking the streets, who's held directly accountable to the citizens. I believe that it's not only time for just an elected mayor, but for a visionary, someone who can bring this city together. However, I understand that this is a very difficult issue. And when this is all said and done, we've got to remember that each of us has one vote and that we are still neighbors after this is over. And so we need to work together to find a way to move forward, no matter what the outcome is in November.
Thank you. Ms. Rose.
All right, I think I've been clear for a very long time that I believe that electing a mayor in Cleveland Heights would be a net benefit for the city. I believe that leadership is lacking in a managed form of government. When you rely on elected leadership that consists of a committee of seven people who have difficulty communicating periodically, who take a great deal of time to determine things when things maybe need to happen a little bit more quickly. And then additionally, you add on to that the separation of powers issue that creates a situation where instead of calling an administrative branch to task, say in a committee hearing or something like that, what we do is circle wagons because we feel like it's one branch of government almost and this is something that inhibits growth. This is something that inhibits taking the long look at yourself and improvement. Holding the city manager accountable, right now we've got, we can fire her, but that's the nuclear option, right? How often do we do that? What do we do that for? That's something that we've struggled with.
Thank you. We will now move to closing statements. Each candidate has a, has one minute for a closing statement. We do not take questions from the floor, sir. The candidates will go in reverse order from their opening statements. So Melde George Hart will go first.
I like to link with my values and those values include being transparent and providing people with access to those people elected. Listening to people and their issues and being collaborative to solve problems. As a council member, I plan to hold regular meetings with citizens so that they can come to me and talk to me and raise their issues to me. My email and phone will be published so that constituents can talk to me. I know this city and want to work to keep it vibrant, walkable, bikeable, safe, and cost effective for residents while providing services. Cleveland Heights is a unique and wonderful place. Each neighborhood of our city is part of our identity. We all need to work together to solve issues because we are really all neighbors.
Thank you. Ms. Rose.
Once again, I ask for your vote.
Ms. Rose. I'm sorry, I messed up the order, but go ahead.
What?
Yeah.
Is it my turn?
Yes, go ahead. I messed up the order, but I apologize.
It's already started over on the clock. Same thing.
Yeah. That's it.
I'm a process person. So once again, I ask for your vote to reelect me to Cleveland Heights City Council. When I first ran for council four years ago, one of the blanks of my platform had to do with transparency. I believe that I delivered on that. One of the first projects that I undertook when I was elected to council was making sure that we got the council packet on the website so the citizens didn't have to do a public records request. Councilperson Sarah was very helpful with that process too. I think that I have also demonstrated my commitment to my own neighborhood by my activities within the neighborhood and an increased visibility of my neighborhood in the priorities of this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our third statement is from Mary Dunbar.
Residents come up with some of the best ideas for changes in our city, but these ideas need the council champion to be adopted. I have worked with residents and been that champion for numerous pieces of legislation and developments. Since I became chair of a council housing and transportation committee a year ago, council adopted a local historic district ordinance that enables the Medusa Building Project. This legislation was promoted by residents of the city's landmark petition. We have passed foreclosure bonds legislation promoted by the Greater Cleveland Congregation's Noble Road Group. I also claim a share in the progress made thanks to residents' requests and the city's transportation advisory committee for improvements as a walkable, bikeable, and transit friendly community. I want to continue working effectively with and for you. So please vote for Mary Dunbar, the city council.
Thank you. Ms. Sarah.
Thank you again for listening. Thank you again for listening to us answer these questions as quickly as we can. You know, a minute to answer a question doesn't provide a lot of opportunity for new ones. So I encourage anyone who want to be to reach out and have a conversation with us. I've been a strong, progressive, and independent voice on council. To probably to the annoyance of some of my colleagues, voting though sometimes alone will vote on things that usually just sail through. I think that it's important that we keep a dissenting voice on council. I think that it's important for the dialogue. I think it's important for the discourse and I think it's important to make sure that people are involved in that conversation. So thank you for being here. I appreciate your support.
Thank you very much. That concludes the first portion of our candidate forum. I deeply apologize. I knew that.
Thank you so much. Again, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I am asking for your vote. This is a community that I love. I met my wife here. We've been here together for over 20 years. If you want information about my campaign and my beliefs, you can check me out on Facebook at @ElectAnthonyMaddox or around this room, there are folks in red Hope Bill T-shirts ready to assist you and give you all the information that you need. I'd love to connect with you tonight again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now, that concludes the first portion of our candidate forum. We will reconvene in five minutes, just five, so you can run around, but come right back. For the two candidates who are seeking to fill the unexpired term. Round two. We have two candidates who are running for a single two-year unexpired term. And we will follow the same rules as before. I will use most of the same questions as before. If you have a new question to submit, once again, just raise your hand and we'll get your card. Apparently, some people didn't get it, but you see the two-year term. All right, we're going to, I was asked to let you know that the video will be available online tomorrow evening. Our two candidates are Craig Cobb and Davida Russell. And we'll begin with an opening statement. Based on the pulling of the numbers, Davida Russell will go first for a two-minute opening statement.
Good evening. First, let me thank the League of Women Voters in Future Heights. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Good evening. First, let me thank the League of Women Voters in Future Heights. My name is Davida Russell and I am seeking the unexpired term for Cleveland Heights City Council. I am a second generation, 37-year resident of Noble Neighbors area in Cleveland Heights. I've worked with developmental disabilities for 35 years. I am now a substitute teacher and school bus driver. I am a labor leader well-known at the national, state, and local levels. I love Cleveland Heights. Cleveland Heights was a safe haven for me and my family in the mid-'70s when we addressed, when we had to deal with racism in the Hollywood area. I have served on many committees, volunteered positions, such as Cleveland Heights Reaching Board Committee, Executive Board of the Gateway Economic Development Corporation of Greater Cleveland, Vice President, and the first member of the Cohawka County Charter Review Commission and the only one to ask back for a second term. I have also served on the MRDD Future States Committee for the State of Ohio. I have served with President Clinton for the Women's Roundtable of Greater Cleveland and I have represented public employees in St. Follow, Brazil on behalf of the AFL-CIO where I received an award from the Ambassador of Italy. I am seeking the position of the Cleveland Heights City Council because I believe it is time for me to bring my energy and resources home. I believe I bring a totally different background and perspective to this position. I'm not a lawyer. I am a blue collar worker. I'm a teacher and a school bus driver. That brings a grounding that makes me uniquely qualified by acting advocacy, have provided funding and support and services programs aimed at resolving issues and better realize on people at the state, national, and local levels. I believe my experience in leadership, listening advocacy, and my goals will be keeping the community safe, smart, community development, and community engagement.
And Craig Cobb, please. Number four, please. Craig Cobb.
Good evening. I am Craig Cobb. My thanks to the League for sponsoring this event and to my fellow residents for coming here this evening. While it is true I am a lawyer and I have been one for 37 years, I came to Cleveland Heights 40 years ago and I lived in a basement apartment on Euclid Heights Boulevard while I was a building custodian and worked my way through law school, working two jobs at post offices and as a substitute teacher. I've lived in the Cleveland Heights Coventry neighborhood now for a total of 27 years. I married to my wife, Ruth, who was here making me nervous and we have assigned as a junior at Ohio University. I was appointed to city council in April without having any political connections or the backing of any political party or politician. What I have is a background in city government and municipal law and a long history of community and public service and I have a reputation for honesty, integrity, and always exercising good judgment. Over the last 20 years that I've lived in Cleveland Heights, I have been on a number of boards and commissions trying to do my best to work for the residents of this city because of my sincere belief in community and public service. For those of you that are unfamiliar with the process, when there is a vacancy on city council, the remaining members get to pick by majority of who they want to have to fill that position. Five of the six persons that were making that decision are registered Democrats. I am not. I am an independent, although I believe in Democratic principles and the beliefs of those in the Democratic Party, but I'm an independent, what the Board of Elections calls an unaffiliated voter. When I applied for this position, I thought that there was no way that anyone that wasn't a registered Democrat would be picked. To my surprise, I was and I believe my selection was based upon my background, my qualifications, and my years of dedicated service to this city.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Start with the same warm-up question, starting with Mr. Cobb. Are you a registered voter at your current address?
Yes, I am. Got the postcard today.
And Ms. Russell?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Get on to a slightly more contentious question then regarding Top of the Hill. In general, what do you think about the Top of the Hill process? Would you do it specifically? A more specific question was presented by some residents from Buckingham condominium, which was presented to council and has not been answered. They're stating that the Top of the Hill project violates the zoning, the Cleveland Heights zoning ordinance, which is on the city's website. Stating the purpose is to protect property values, assure adequate light in the air, limit, control, and regulate the height, size, and area for all private... and area for all properties, and protect the physical environment and natural resources for all citizens. Please comment on Top of the Hill. We'll start with Ms. Russell.
Top of the Hill. How should I feel about Top of the Hill? Top of the Hill, I've walked that neighborhood. We're talking about a $75 million project on land that is about $25 million to more worth in value. We have a developer that we are paying, that's paying $10 a year for leasing that area. We have residents who are complaining about parking. We have residents who are complaining about the height of the building, as well as they are ready to move if the project takes place. I believe that the Top of the Hill project is a beautiful project, but it's not on Noble Road, it's not on Taylor, and it definitely has not built in Milton. A school has been closed for 15 years.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb?
I'm familiar with the letter that was directed to city council citing the zoning ordinance and the contention that this project violates the zoning ordinance. Unfortunately, like so many things lawyers do, that zoning ordinance has been written, so it's subject to different interpretations depending on which side of the issue you are. I am in favor of the Top of the Hill development. I feel for the residents that live in the Buckingham that unfortunately are going to have their views obscured. Any building that was going to be more than five, I'm sorry, that was going to be more than four or five stories was going to end up obscuring their views. At one time, there was a much larger building there. The city needs that development. We need to bring what are estimated to be at least an additional 270 to 280 residents to this community to help pay taxes, to help build our tax base, so we can fund the operations and the progress that this city needs.
Thank you. Couple of follow-up questions. If the developer of Top of the Hill asks for more money, would you approve it? And explain how it came to grow to the number of stories it did, which you have answered her response. Would you like to answer the money question?
No, I'm not in favor of giving that developer another dime.
And Ms. Russell?
I agree. Another dime.
Thank you. Moving on to infrastructure. What would you do to improve the infrastructure of the city, especially water and sewer lines? And what is your position on outsourcing the trash and refuse department? Starting with Mr. Cobb.
First of all, our water situation, our water is now owned by the city of Cleveland, so we no longer have any issues with having to do any infrastructure repairs. Our sewer system, we are under an EPA consent decree to address the sewer overflow that occurs when we have a heavy rainfall and the water goes into Dome Brook and Dove Lake Brook. That's being studied right now by the city and we'll soon know what the cost is going to be to remediate the problem. Another question.
Trash and outsources?
I'm not in favor of privatizing our trash collection or any other city services. From where I sit, the essential function of government is to provide governmental services, and that includes trash. I think that when you end up privatizing these, it's less expensive to the city in the short term, but in the long term, it ends up costing you money and you're held hostage by the company you've contracted with.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
Yes, for our sewer services, as the council said before, they're still digging into the information for our sewer system, and we are under that EPA, and whatever we do is going to stretch our budget because we are between a rock and a hard place when it comes to sewer system, as well it is in other communities. As far as the trash and sanitation services being privatized, I'm totally against that. I've gone through many different privatizations in the workforce, so I know what privatization does to the city, what it can do for the city, as well as the employees. They start off with low, and then gradually rates, the rates, and the prices. So I am not in favor of privatization.
Thank you very much. Starting with Ms. Russell. I know we'll attempt to go back and forth, but I may get confused at some point. Question of sustainability. Other cities, notably South Yugland and Shanker Heights, have departments of sustainability or sustainability directors. Would you support the establishment of a sustainability office to make Cleveland Heights a leader in fighting the cause of climate change? Or alternatively, what is your view on climate change?
Most definitely. I think that Cleveland Heights has always been a leader, and they should be, they should continue to be a leader in climate control and climate change to make sure that we stay in front and ahead of the other communities.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Cobb?
I do believe in climate change. Within the last year, the city changed our zoning ordinances to be more friendly to the environment. For those of you that have lived here for a long time, you know that at one time you had to have a concrete or asphalt driveway. We changed our zoning code so you can now have a permeable surface. At one time, you had to have your gutters hooked up. Now you can have a rain barrel. The zoning code now requires that when there's any new development in the city, the developer in constructing the building has to be mindful of our environment and must do things such as having energy-efficient building materials and supplies used, bike racks, things of that nature. Also, our zoning code downed with residents that have solar panels on their roof. All of these things were prohibited years ago. We're looking at what we have to do with our trash department. I would love when we purchase new gas trucks, if we could look at them being supplied by liquid or natural gas versus diesel or gasoline.
Thank you. Starting with Mr. Cobb. A couple of questions about financial assistance, financial incentives. Besides loans, what resources are available to help owners to maintain our century homes, our older homes? Or alternatively, how does the city use tax incentives and abatement to attract business?
Well, we have a number of loan programs to help elderly people stay in their homes and do repairs. Those are subject to age limitations, 62 and up, and also income limitations. We have a referral to the Home Resource Center for other residents that live in the city that need assistance or advice about how to do repairs. I am in favor of tax abatement and tax increment financing when it is done appropriately and when there is a demonstrated need on the part of the developer to do that. You heard Councilman Lill mention earlier that we have something called the CRA, which basically offers homeowners the opportunity to have a tax abatement or improvements that they make in their home, and also for new residential construction. So these are the sort of programs that we need to try and encourage and increase development and also to help our homeowners make repairs to their homes. You shouldn't be penalized for increasing the value of your home.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
It was great to have the CRA come into existence in 2018 with the tax abatements for homeowners and for people who are trying to rehab their homes. What I think that we also need to do is with all of the loans and information that Mr. Cobb has just said, I believe a lot of our residents are not aware of a lot of that information, so that when they are developing their homes, because I know I had an additional loan that was not aware of a tax abatement. So I think that we need to get that information more out to our residents of what type of loans and abilities they have, as cutting costs, as we have any loans that we can show as a white one.
Thank you. Starting with Ms. Russell. Would you like to comment on plans for Noble or for Severance?
Yes. Plans for Noble and Severance. Well, I live on Finley Road, right off of Williams and Noble, so I'm right in the heart of the Noble Road Board. Before I actually decided to run for office, I am connected with the National AFL-CIO, who runs a housing project. It's called Building America. And I've been talking with Future Heights on the financing and development of Noble Road, as well as Taylor, as well as Severance. We have talked by conference call for us watching in DC, and if you look at Churchill Estate at 2861 in Detroit, you'll be able to see the multimillion-dollar building that was recreated, rebuilt by union and financed by union.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb?
That Noble corridor study is a very visionary plan. I would love if we were able to implement it, but unfortunately, we don't have the finances. That study spoke of initially needing $6 to $10 million just to do initial infrastructure areas. What I'm more concerned about is what can the city do right now? We are one of the largest property owners in that area, and frankly, the condition of our property is deplorable. How can we expect the commercial landlords in that area to upkeep their property when we're not doing it? The city simply has to do a better job. Severance is owned by an absentee, out-of-state landlord that specializes in buying these depressed malls across the Midwest. We are in the process of hiring a consultant to help us deal with this landlord. In the meantime, we are doing everything possible to keep that landlord from degrading the property any further than he has been.
Thank you. And one more question about elected mayor versus city manager. What is your view on the issue, and how are you able to hold the city manager accountable?
Is that going to be first? We state the tough one for last. I was a member of the Charter Review Commission, and I voted in favor of maintaining our current form of government, and that remains my view today. However, for those of you that have followed the development, you know that I prevented our city council from putting a competing ballot measure on because I believe that the citizens have the right to vote on this issue as a single ballot measure in this fall, notwithstanding my own personal opinion. I do believe that there are problems with holding our city manager accountable. She does a lot of things great, but unfortunately, we can do better in terms of responding to citizen complaints and requests for service. I'm committed to fixing the system. I will be supportive. If the voters decide that they want to have a mayor, I will be 100 supportive of that, and I will do everything that I can if I'm elected in the next two years to make sure that we have a smooth transition.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
I am definitely for issue 26. I believe that we do need an elected mayor. I don't see the sky falling when, I didn't see the sky falling when the county changed from a commissioner system to a county executive system, county council. I believe that the citizens of Cleveland Heights have the right to decide what type of government system they want, and anytime there is a neglect or, no, that's not the word. Anytime there is a neglect or someone talking about people not being able to vote on an issue, I have an issue with that, and I have a problem with that because I've always fought for voters' rights and against voters' discretion.
Thank you very much. That concludes our question period. We move on now to closing statements. We're in reverse order. Mr. Cobb?
I am your independent voice on council because as your representative, I work for you. That means seeking your input and actually listening to you before I make any decision. It also means that any decision that I make will be independent from outside influence, political or otherwise. My undivided loyalty is to you and this city, and no one can call me later for the return of a favor because they endorsed me or made a political contribution to my campaign. Our elections in Cleveland Heights are non-artisan, meaning that there is no designation on the ballot as to whether one is a Republican or a Democrat or Independent. The reason for that is because we want our elected officials to be voted on not based on party affiliation or lack thereof, but on their merits. I hope that voters in Cleveland Heights will do on November 5th what city council did and make a decision on me based upon my merits rather than my lack of any party affiliation. If anyone would like to show their support with a yard sign, please contact me. I'd be honored to have it in your yard, and I'll work to deliver it.
Ms. Russell?
I have retired presidency on behalf of working men and women across the state and many who reside in Cleveland Heights. I did care of the success of this community, which makes me very motivated to serve our residents, all the residents of Cleveland Heights. I look to see Noble Road to be revitalized and renewed along with Cater Road and Hillview School that has been closed for over 15 years. These areas of Cleveland Heights are suffering and truly needs help. I will work with government officials, community leaders, residents, as well as engaging union leaders on large projects and addressing these issues to encourage investment and development in properties for residential and businesses and land use. Yes, I have a party affiliation, and I have a lot of connections at the state and local government levels, and guess what? Cleveland Heights is not an island. You need relationships at the federal, state, and local and county level to be able to bring in the money and the resources that you need to make Cleveland Heights a vibrant city. My name is Davida Russell, and I respectfully ask for your vote, and I have approved this message. Thank you.
This concludes our candidate night for 2019. I would like to thank all of our volunteers who made this evening possible, and to thank all of you for attending. And we hope to see you all next week at the high school for the neighborhood issues. Thank you very much.